Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for attending our December 12th meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's a pleasure to be here and we appreciate, certainly appreciate everyone stepping out in the cold and the snowy weather to attend in person. We're certainly going to be thankful for today and we have a pretty full agenda. So, do we have a quorum? And I know we have some on virtual.
Yeah, Trustee Edgerton, we do have quorum. Trustee Turfee is unable to attend but has provided proxy vote for the action items. And Trustee Williams is joining us virtually.
Okay, thank you. Is livestream operational? We're all good?
Getting a thumbs up.
All right, for that. So, I'll call on the board for a motion to accept today's agenda.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Secondly, are there any comments regarding our minutes from September 26th and October 16th meeting? Any comments? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. First of all, again, like to express our gratitude for everybody attending in person today. But also, I'd like to express gratitude for those individuals that have participated in our learning session, learning and listening session, I should say, as we search for the present, the 10th president for Western Michigan University. We've had more than 200 people attend, which has been really great. And certainly special thanks to Trustee Liggins and Wood for spearheading this, who facilitated a lot and put in a lot of time of effort as, in these efforts of our new president, presidential search. Obviously, their leadership is crucial to ensuring the voices of our community are heard and reflected in the presidential search. So, I'm confident with their guidance. They'll identify a leader who will guide us in WMU in the, in our next era of excellence. The presidential search is in the recruitment phase. I think that's important for people to know. There is a website available for nominations. It's wmiss.edu-presidential-search. So, if you have any nominations, any names, we encourage people to put their information in there so that the search committee, the consultant can reach out and do those preliminary findings. This is a season of celebration for us, both in our personal lives and here at Western. It's, one of our highlights is the fall commencement, and we're going to honor the achievements of our graduates. It's a milestone for those graduates, but also for their families, the loved ones that they share it with, and dedicated faculty and staff who have supported them throughout their journey here at Western. We're thrilled to celebrate that. We have two ceremonies this weekend, 9:00 and noon, and I know a number of trustees are going to be in attendance, as long, as well as the president giving out his certificates. And if you haven't ever watched one of those, watch his speech. I mean, he goes through the countries that we have here, and it's impressive. Also, we're going to be celebrating, you know, the Broncos, not only who are taking on their diplomas, but we're also in the, in the field at the Salute to Veterans Bowl Game in Montgomery, Alabama. So, our Broncos are going to face the Alabama Jaguars at 9:00 PM on Saturday night on ESPN, I believe. So, it's kind of a fitting finale to the weekend of Bronco, Bronco pride. Also, congratulations to the intercollegiate athletics and football program for making its way to the bowl game. I mean, I guess it's been since 19, or 2021, not 1921, 2021 since we last went to a bowl game. That was a while ago, yeah. I even went to one in 2016. So, let's, let's be honest. You know, they're in Detroit. So, I think it's going to be a great time, and certainly, I hope everybody tunes in to, to watch the Broncos. Before we dive into the agenda today, I do want to just take a moment to acknowledge dedicated individuals who spearheaded the efforts to develop a visual tool for the board, for data, to help us along with our fiduciary responsibilities, particularly in the areas of enrollment, retention, and student success. So, a special thank you to the collaborative efforts of the Institutional Research, University Advancement, and the offices of the Provost and Business and Finance Offices. We really actually have now a great dashboard for use as trustees to, to be able to, to continue our mission for Western. In particular, special thanks to Molly Herth, Deputy Chief of Staff, Jason Jack, I don't know if they're here, Director of Institutional Research, and Becca Sly, Business Intelligent Analyst in the Institutional Research. I mean, you guys, it was a great, it's a great tool for us to use. So, I'm very happy and certainly appreciate all the work you guys put into this. For the agenda, we have a couple of action items today. We're going to be adopting the policy and procedures for periodic assessment of the university president going forward. And then also, we have the president's assessment today for President Montgomery. One of our responsibilities as a board is, of course, assessing and setting compensation for the president, and we're going to take on those charges today. The president's employment agreement states that salary has to be reviewed annually and potentially adjusted. I especially want to thank Vice Chair Turfee for leading us, the PCAT, in all of these processes. I know he can't be here today, but we do have his proxy vote, and we'll move forward on that. Under consent agenda, we've obviously got the personnel report. We'd like to thank all those faculty and administrators and employees of the university who are retiring and wish them well, especially combination and congratulations to those that have achieved other milestones in their academic careers. We're going to have a commercial lease agreement with the Michigan Geological Survey and Department of Energy. We're going to consider granting a national pipeline easement over at West Hills Athletic Club. We've got a change in membership for the Asylum Lake Preserve. And then we're also, we've got to consider some annuity and life income fund reports, which are all just on the consent agenda. So, this time, I'll turn it over to President Montgomery to share his remarks.
Thank you, Chair Edgerton. One, I wanted to start off by echoing your sentiments of gratitude. As we approach this holiday season, I am incredibly thankful for the perseverance and dedication of our students, faculty, and staff, each of whom plays a critical role in making Western Michigan University a better place every single day. I want to thank each of you for your hard work towards meeting our goals and aligning with our enduring mission, so that all may learn. Today, we have outstanding news report from the Office of Research and Innovation. According to recently announced National Science Foundation Higher Education Research and Development Survey, sometimes called the HERD Survey, for fiscal year 2023, we've moved up 23 spots in our ranking, surpassing institutions like Miami University, the U.S. Air Force Academy, University of North Carolina at Greensboro, and that placed down the road, Oakland University as well. So, all of those we passed this year. We had $45.1 million in qualifying research expenditures, placing us 235th in the nation out of some 3,000 institutions. It marks a 63% increase, or say it again, it marks a 63% increase from fiscal year 2022, when our research expenditures were $27.7 million. So, I want to make sure we give a shout out to the faculty and staff who made it possible, as well as Vice President Seager. This really puts us on the, the front lines and gives us one, another way to show how much we're contributing knowledge and innovation to society. Obviously, it strengthens our experience-driven learning capabilities and enhances our academic programs, as well as building new partnerships with industry. We've got last year's numbers, but we're also starting off to a hot start this year as well. This fiscal year, our research efforts, while still young, the value of awards that we've gotten between July and October exceeded $26.5 million. So, that's in the first quarter. That is almost the same number you heard for fiscal year '22 already in the first quarter. So, again, hats off to everybody who's making these historic gains possible. Again, we're continuing to create new knowledge, new creative activities, at the same time as we're making sure we focus on student success. And so that having the highest retention rates in our campus history at 81.1%, as well as expanding our research says, we're doing gangbusters. Our faculty and staff are doing gangbusters and want to make sure that we acknowledge that and say thank you to them for those, those efforts. Speaking of Broncos success, as Chair Edgerton pointed out, 1,200 of our students are graduating this weekend. They include students like Josie Haleko, a digital marketing and psychology major who defended her thesis on customer experience at local Bilbo T-Shop, or Rachel Manja, whose internship at Greenleaf Trust sharpened her expertise in financial modeling, evaluation, and market analysis. Each graduate, of course, has a unique and extraordinary journey that prepared them for a meaningful career and fulfilling lives. But these are some of the great examples of, of students who've managed to, to get a full and rich education here at Western. If you're able, please join us at Fall Commencement. It's set for Saturday, December 14th. We'll have 838 bachelors, 259 masters, 66 doctoral degrees. During the ceremony is at 9:00 AM and at noon at Miller Auditorium. Among those receiving degrees will be 18 employee graduates who work at the university and have continued their education. I want to congratulate all those, and we will acknowledge them after the ceremony at a subsequent board meeting and call them out. I also want to make sure we acknowledge a recent set of award winners, our Make a Difference Award winners. These are staff who really embody character, creativity, and collaboration, who really have gone above and beyond, and have been recognized by their peers and cited and acknowledged. And so, this year, we had an exceptional class just a few weeks ago that we celebrated. So, I just want to call them out. Joshua Balfour, Gary Barton, Kimberly Belcher, Jada Birch, Jada Birch, I'm sorry, David Florida, Darren Fox, Bethany Gotheaer, Amanda Hojer, Devin Johnson, Heidi Glenn, and Destiny Wallace. Congratulations to them for their great efforts that spanned the campus. Last week, the U.S. Green Buildings Council of West Michigan awarded our Dunbar Hall renovation project its Innovation Project Award, gave it first place. This prestigious award recognizes projects that push the boundaries and the standards of building construction, design, and operation. The council noted that the success of Dunbar Hall renovation is a testament to the collaborative efforts of Tower Pinkster, the design team, the WMU faculty, staff, and students. By involving the campus community in the design process, the project team ensured that the building would meet the needs of its users. For those who have been to Dunbar, I'm sure you share the common sentiment of just being blown away at the transformation from before and after, and what a great place it is to educate our students and provide them the kind of supports that they need. Want to make sure we give a special shout out to College of Arts and Science Dean Carla Koretzky and her team, as well as the facilities team and the students who shared their knowledge and expertise in making this building really, really, the before and after picture, you're like, ooh, really striking. So, I want to make sure people acknowledge that. Also want to commend the Henneke Institute for Global Education. It hosted an International Education Week 2024, Internationalization on Campus and Beyond. Did that in November. It had several events celebrating global diversity and promotion of cross-cultural understanding. So, our own HIGGY continues to lead the way in internationalization. As Chair Edgerton mentioned, we're going bowling this Saturday at 9:00 PM, not 9:00 PM, at the NCA's Salute to Veterans Bowl Game against South Alabama, kick off the 2024 Bowl season. And we'll be live on ESPN, and so encourage people who are not going to be there because they're participating in graduation, and to, to watch if you're not able to be there. Athletics has had another remarkable year. In the fall, all five of those sports that competed, all five of those sports competed, got into the NCA postseason. That's never happened on our campus. It's a record. The highest number we'd ever had before was three, and now we had every single one of them qualifying. So, hats off to all of those athletes in all the sports that competed this fall. It really is a testament to them, as well as the coaches and the players and the university. And I'm sure that they will also not only continue to star on the field, but as they did last year, star in the classroom. So, we're waiting to get the last GPA reports too. So, I look forward to that, and we claim that trophy. With that, I'll stop and turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, President Montgomery, for those remarks. Now, I'd like to welcome our shared governance partners, Faculty Senate, Dr. Amy Neko.
Good afternoon, Chair Edgerton, members of the board, President Montgomery, colleagues, and guests. On behalf of the Western Michigan University Faculty Senate, thank you for the opportunity to address the board and update you on our activities. Just a few things to update you all on. The Faculty Senate recently passed several amendments to its constitution and bylaws, which will be forwarded for approval to the Board of Trustees at the February meeting. This week, faculty across campus received notification for the 2025 Faculty Senate General Election of Representatives at Large, departmental senators, and council and committee membership. Communication for departments to select their presidential scholars will be distributed soon and will be due mid-January. You are cordially invited to attend the March 14th, 2025 event to be held from 4:00 to 6:00 in the Student Center ballrooms. The Faculty Senate Executive Board has been acting in place of the Unaffiliated Units Curriculum Committee until such a time that the committee was fully seated. Happy to report that that committee has been fully seated and will begin its regularly scheduled meeting dates as of January 2025. A memorandum of action came forward from the Research Policies Council for a vote at the December Faculty Meeting, or Faculty Senate Meeting. The MOA 2411 is titled Faculty Research and Creative Activity Support Fund Distribution Policy, and it reflects policy to comport with what's outlined in Article 34.1 in the AAUP Agreement. In the agreement, it states, quote, "The administration of the fund shall follow policies established by the Research Policies Council and approved by the Faculty Senate and subsequently recommended to the President of the University by the Faculty Senate and approved by the President of the University and the President of the Chapter." The policies that are currently in place are outdated, and MOA 2411 is designed to replace MOAs 0310, 0803, 0806, 0906, and 1602. The Research Policies Council has worked diligently to provide an updated MOA that fulfills the responsibility of the Faculty Senate related to this article in the agreement. The fact, the Executive Board of the Faculty Senate was alerted by the AAUP just prior to the December meeting date that there were concerns about this MOA. We have not yet received specific information about those concerns, and thus postponed discussion of MOA 2411 until such a time as it's able to hear the concerns. That's all I have for my comments. Thank you, Chair Edgerton, for allowing me to address all of you today. I wish you all a happy holiday season and a happy new year, and I'm available to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Thank you, Doctor. Happy holidays to you. Alex, WSA, Alex Casper?
Good afternoon, Chair Edgerton, members of the board, and everyone in attendance. I would like to begin by thanking the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the student body. I probably appear a little more peppy than usual because I haven't finished with finals, and I wish the best of luck to my fellow students as we are all completing them today and tomorrow. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to the Fall 2024 grads and express my jealousy of the football team as they really got to miss the entire storm, and they're all warm in Alabama right now. It's an honor to stand before you today as I update you all on the incredible progress we've made this semester. Home is what we ran on in April, or in January and February, and it stands for Honesty, Onward for the Brown and Gold, Meaning, and Effectiveness. Each of these pillars represents the values driving the Western Student Association as we draw, as we serve the student body and our Bronco community, and it's been our driving framework for this year. The H and O in Home stands for Honesty, a value foundational to integrity and stability. This semester, I dedicated several weekdays to hosting Presidential Office Hours, where I listen to students share their bops and flops of WMU. These candid conversations provided valuable insights to the challenges of our student body. And next semester, I'm excited to expand this initiative, visiting the College of Aviation, Engineering, Fine Arts, and other areas to engage with students directly. Transparency has been another priority. I've been actively sharing my meeting agendas with President Montgomery to our legislative branch, ensuring everyone remains informed about progress and developments of our meetings. Our communications team has also worked tirelessly to enhance engagement through social media and newsletters. Thank you to Director of Marketing Outreach, Ally Rack, Assistant Brady Taylor, and Director of Information Management, Lucy Grip, for keeping our community informed. And finally, accountability has been key. Our leadership team implemented initiatives like the Legislative and Allocation Feedback forms, empowering our students to shape our bylaws and processes for the future. The O in Home stands for Onward for the Brown and Gold, and it reflects both our pride as Broncos and our commitment to ensuring WSA is prepared to serve students for generations to come. This summer, oh, excuse me. This summer, we secured a significant victory by raising the student assessment fee from $55 to $62 for next year, creating sustainable support for our RSO development. Our Governing Processes Committee, co-chaired by Speaker Sam Longlet and Chief of Finance, Mason Dorod, is also working to update our constitution, ensuring it remains effective and adaptable as student needs evolve. We're also looking forward to improving all of our bylaws, including our judicial, marketing, and allocations documents. And looking ahead, we will review the WSA strategic plan to identify key priorities for the coming years. As we embrace a resurgence in student engagement post-pandemic, we're committed to building a more inclusive and forward-thinking WSA. The M in Home represents meeting. And this fall, our eighth biannual Mental Health Week, led by Claire Westbrook, was a resounding success. Thousands of students engaged in activities that reminded us of the importance of mental well-being. Meanwhile, Liberty Casteva brought us joy to campus with initiatives like midterms and finals donuts in different parts of campus, and then also had encouraging post-it notes posted all across campus in our bathrooms and different study spots as well. These acts of kindness have a huge impact on the Bronco community's spirit. Finally, the E in Home stands for Effectiveness, ensuring that every aspect of WSA operates with purpose and impact. This semester, we hosted our first-ever joint branch meeting, fostering collaboration across all three branches of the Western Student Association. And speaking of, each branch is making a significant impact. The Legislative Branch has seen record-breaking participation, with 294 unique students walking through our doors and 190 RSOs represented in the Assembly. We proudly remain the largest student legislative body in Michigan, and a huge thank you to our incredible three-peat speaker, Sam Longlet, for fostering such an inclusive and productive environment, along with his dedicated team, Secretary Andy Kazmar, Head of Committees, Emma Hall, Membership Chair Tate Weirda, and all of legislative leadership for their hard work. Our allocations team has also had a remarkable semester. Under the leadership of Director Travis Melson, Assistant Director Bailey McPhillips, Secretary Avery Tower, and Treasurer Natalie Farrell, the team has funded $255,560.50 this semester. This includes 86 operational budgets, 160 events, seven startups, or seven startup RSOs, and 24 conferences. Their efforts ensure that their student organizations have resources they need to thrive. Chief of Finance Mason Dorod has seen outstanding success with the Home Fund, our initiative, our innovative approach to support collaborations and campus improvement. This semester alone, the Home Fund received 20 unique applications, an astonishing 20 times more than last year. Additionally, we've seen several submissions for sustainability grants, and we're eager to fund projects that make our campus greener and more sustainable. Director for Sustainability, Grace Anderson's commitment to sustainability at this university is inspiring, and her work is greatly appreciated. As we look forward to next semester, I'm reminded of the importance of leadership and continuity. WMU and WSA will both welcome new presidents, and I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition on behalf and for the benefit of the student body. I'm happy to report that the Western Student Association is doing well and ready for another semester of serving students, and I look forward to continuing fostering this wonderful community of leaders that this organization has built. Thank you, onward for the brown and gold, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Alex? Nope. Thank you very much, Alex. Have a great, great holiday.
You too.
Do you have to, oh no, it's on, okay. Good afternoon to everyone, including the board and everyone else in attendance. My name is Jocelyn, as already announced. I'm the Graduate Student Association President, and I just want to talk a little bit about really all the successes that GSA has had. If you don't know the history, but GSA was up and running this semester, and I'm really, really proud of my team being able to pull through all of the weight of getting ourselves established back on campus. We have had a successful semester, including collaborations across campus and connecting with other offices to bring new opportunities to our new, to our general assembly members. Some of these collaborations include, but are not limited to, the Career Center, CAB, and Health Promotions, and we will continue to work with many other offices and teams next semester. This semester, we also started working with HIGGY and Waldo Library. When looking at HIGGY, we are working to have them come in early next semester to talk to our general assembly, like the town halls that they have recently had on campus, to help close some of the gaps of communication that were happening across campus with some of their students and allowing them to have a space to speak in front of ours. With Waldo Library, we are working on revamping the Grad Student Commons area and figuring out a space on how to make it more up-to-date with items that our grad students will benefit from. Moving on now into how GSA has been able to help grad students with conference and license fees, I'm really proud to announce that we have been able to assist them with about $18,400 in fees to about 20 individuals or RSOs from September to November. This means that these individuals were able to attend conferences to truly get the most and best out of all of it and come back and make our campus better with all of the information that they are able to soak in at those spaces and places. We will continue to push to inform everyone about this opportunity that GSA offers its students, so that we can continue assisting with this, with these expenses to help get our students out to conferences. helping us put together the newest version of the Constitution to have it up and early running for next semester when we start all over again. Thank you so much again to all, and special thank you if you have assisted with GSA at any point this semester. We continue to strive to push for our students and to make it better a space and place for all to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Any questions?
No questions.
No?
The comment is, it's really good to see GSA up and running again, and we appreciate your leadership there.
Thank you. Happy holiday.
President Montgomery, I'll turn it over to you for the presentation today.
Sure. Last week, our College of Engineering and Applied Sciences hosted a press conference with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, where they announced the awarding of a $700,000 grant to our faculty experts. This award, which includes matching funds from the university, will support the development and expansion of state-of-the-art electric vehicle and semiconductor technical training programs. The curriculum is being created in collaboration with General Motors, ensuring alignment with industry demands. This first-of-a-kind public-private collaboration will provide transformative education and career opportunities for students both here on our campus in Kalamazoo and in Grand Rapids, but also we're pleased to announce the partnership with Kellogg Community College, who joined the press conference as a recipient as well of that investment, allowing greater collaboration with them. In a moment, we'll hear from Dr. Masood Attashbar, the Principal Investigator on this award, who's leading an incredibly talented team of engineering faculty to design the new certificate programs. These programs will directly strengthen our state's talent pipeline in key industries such as electric vehicles and semiconductors. The faculty team from Departments of Electrical and Computer Engineering, as well as Chemical and Paper Engineering, bring extensive research and development expertise in semiconductors and batteries, which are paired with the valuable industry experience. Beyond the announcement of the award and the program that will fund, one of the really most compelling moments of the press conference was the testimony of Eliza Eaton, a senior electrical, I'm sorry, senior aerospace engineering student. She shared how Western's curriculum, combined with experiential learning opportunities like her participation in Sunseeker Solar Car Racing Team, shaped her academic focus and career aspiration. Eliza, who interned with General Motors, already has a position waiting for her after graduation at Nissan. She exemplifies Western's holistic, experience-driven approach to learning, integrating hands-on, practical experiences with rigorous classroom instruction, empowering our Broncos to apply their knowledge in real-world contexts. While Eliza wasn't able to join us today, she's actually taking a final exam at this moment, so I guess we'll give her a pass on that. We're fortunate to have a short video of her remarks from the press conference to share. Following the video, Dr. Attashbar will provide us some more information about the program. So are we ready to run the video?
When I first arrived at Western, I had my sights set on the aerospace and aircraft industries. However, thanks to the incredible learning experiences offered by the College of Engineering and Applied Sciences, I quickly discovered my true passion for the electrified automotive field. I've had the privilege of being part of the Sunseeker Solar Car Project for four years, three of those in leadership roles. Through the support of the college, this project allowed us to design, build, and race our very own solar-powered race cars. In fact, the project origins date back to 1990, with the first GM Sun Race, a race that played a pivotal role in advancing electric vehicle technology. As the world begins to recognize the need for greener technologies, my goal as a student and future engineer is to advance this electric vehicle technology and advocate for the continued development and adoption of electric vehicle, or EV, technology, particularly within the automotive industry. During my internship with General Motors, I had the opportunity to work with the body manufacturing team on the Silverado and Hummer electric vehicles. There, I helped build and design, or sorry, build and complete the chassis of these electric vehicles and witnessed firsthand the advantages and challenges that come with implementing this new technology. It's clear to me that if universities such as Western Michigan could incorporate more structured education on electric vehicle technology into their curricula before students embark on internships, we would see a new generation of engineers that are far better prepared for the challenges of this rapidly evolving field. It's truly inspiring that Western offers opportunities like the Sunseeker Solar Car Project and Formula SAE, both of which are working towards advancing this electric vehicle technology. Of course, I am partial towards the Solar Car Team. In fact, when I was choosing a university, it was the opportunity to join the Solar Car Team that ultimately led me to choose Western. The chance to work on cutting-edge technology and the opportunity to work on something that I never knew was part of my curriculum was incredibly exciting as a new student. I firmly believe that by expanding on the existing EV-focused projects here at Western, such as the electric vehicle racing teams, and developing a curriculum dedicated to EV technology, we can help create a new generation of engineers who are not only equipped to tackle the challenges of today, but also lead a way toward a more sustainable electric future. Thank you.
Please join me in welcoming Dr. Attashbar to the podium to describe the program.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to address you, Chair Edgerton, Vice Chair Turf, President Montgomery, trustees, and everyone present today. And thank you for the generous introduction, President Montgomery. It was also wonderful to hear from Eliza, one of our talented aerospace engineering students, whose experience at the college ignited a passion for the electrified automotive field. As the President has said, I am Masood Attashbar, a professor of Electrical and Computer Engineering, and I have the honor of being the Principal Investigator in this project to develop and impactful new certificate programs. I am joined in this effort by my colleagues, Dr. Dinesh Madipatla, Bradley Bazain, King Lu Wu, and Simi Masiehe. We appreciate the generous investment by Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Higher Education Strategic Investment Plan Initiative, and we are excited to begin the curriculum development phase next month, and we plan to welcome our first cohort of students in January 2026. The award, which totals $700,000, will enable us to design and implement stackable certificate programs, battery, and semiconductor technologies, technologies that continue to shape advanced manufacturing. The range of students we are targeting is broad, from high school graduates to students graduating with associate degrees to undergraduate students, as well as those returning to college for new or additional trainings. This effort underscores our commitment to prepare students for meaningful, high-impact careers and meeting the demands of rapidly evolving industry and our state. Last Monday, Avi Achari, MADC's Chair of Talent Solutions and Engagement Officer, was at Floyd Hall to announce this award, and she provided important context about these critical industries and their looming needs. Mrs. Achari noted that Michigan is already a leader in EV and semiconductor technologies, contributing $4.6 billion in our gross regional product annually, with workforce growth projected at 11% over the next five years. Similarly, private companies have pledged billions toward clean energy factories and advanced battery technology projects, estimated to generate 22,000 jobs. Yet, as promising as it sounds, there is a challenge, shortage of engineers and technicians. Our goal at Western is to lead this charge, so to speak, in addressing this talent gap. These stackable certificates are our latest endeavor. This effort builds on our strong history of research and development in partnership with federal agencies and industry leaders. Our Electrical and Computer Engineering and Chemical and Paper Engineering Departments have long been at the forefront of research in semiconductor and battery technologies. By aligning existing courses into stackable certificates, we are creating an innovative framework that blends theoretical knowledge with practical applications. Working with our employer collaborator, General Motors, we are ensuring that curriculum reflects the latest knowledge and skills demanded by the industry. The program will be designed to prepare students for roles such as electrical engineer, semiconductor technician, and EV processing technicians. And by bridging theory and practice, our curriculum will also provide students with hands-on, experiential learning opportunities, equipping them to excel in these roles. The stackable nature of these certificates is a key feature. Students will have the flexibility to build upon their knowledge over time, creating a strong foundation for career development. As I mentioned, high school graduates, students with two-years degrees, traditional undergraduate students, and those returning to college for new or additional training are our target student populations. Articulation agreement with Grand Rapids Community College and Kalamazoo Valley Community College will ensure seamless credit transfer, allowing students to pursue associate or bachelor degrees or even advanced degrees in related fields. The classes will be offered at Floyd Hall on Parkview Campus and at WMU location in downtown Grand Rapids. In closing, we are excited to start this new effort, preparing students for cutting-edge careers and helping shape the future of electric vehicle and semiconductor technologies. Thank you for your time and support, and I'm happy to take any question you may have.
Thank you, Doctor. It's a great accomplishment for Western. Any questions? Nope. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Any public comments at this time?
While there's not for action items, there is at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into the action items, policy and procedures. I'd like to thank Vice Chair Turfey, although he can't be here right now to present, but thank him for his efforts in promoting this, as well as the presidential compensation for today. So with that, I will just give a brief synopsis. Article 3, Section 1 of the WMU Board of Trustees bylaw provides the board is obligated to assess the president's performance. Section 2 of Article 3 provides that the board has ultimate responsibility for developing procedures for assessing periodically the performance and functioning of the president. With that, we've had, this has been a little while in forthcoming, we've been working on this for a little while, and certainly appreciate everybody's input, because I know it did go out to a lot of different groups in consultation with our AGB consultant who helped navigate this with us, so I do appreciate all the input from there. This policy that we're proposing to adopt will help us, intends for us to evaluate the president in the near future, especially as we are in the midst of our presidential search. This will guide us in the incoming years. Near the end of the first and second years of service, there's a review, and then also that the trustees will undertake with the president, and then there's a comprehensive 360-degree assessment at the end of the fourth year, and then alternating cycles, biannual comprehensive, quadrennial reviews every two years after that. So we're kind of putting ourselves on a path for presidential assessment going forward, especially with the new president. So with that, I have a recommended action. It's recommended the board approve the policy and procedures for periodic assessment of the university president to be enacted at the time of hire for Western Michigan University's 10th president. With that, I'll take a motion. Questions? Okay, so moved? Okay, roll call.
Chair Edgerton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey votes yes. Trustee Burris. Trustee Holdley.
Yes.
Trustee Liggins.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Chair Edgerton, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda, item number 11. This is the presidential assessment. So President, and I apologize for reading some of this, but I was asked to jump in here. President Montgomery's employment agreement provides for salary to be reviewed at least annually and adjusted according to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees Presidential Compensation and Assessment Committee, PCAT, facilitated review of the president's leadership performance and recognizes the following accomplishments. This year, WMU achieved a new university record for second-year retention rates at 81.1%. The gains built upon the FIDIC retention rate increased by 3.3 percentage points in the fall of 2023 to 79.8%. Increases in retention rates have overall contributed to improvements in enrollment for the first time since 2011. Overall enrollment grew this fall, which we're very proud of. Our six-year graduation rate increased by 2.7 percentage points to 57.8. It's the highest in 30 years. And our most recent postgraduate report, 94% of our recent graduates indicate they are working or going to school. 92% of those working are doing so in a field related to their major, and 91% say they enjoy their job, which I think is huge. We've also set an organizational record for externally-funded research. We secured $59.6 million in new awards and research expenditures totaled $42.1 million. Our faculty, staff, and students have also applied for 22 patents, which is a huge effort in our move to try to move to R1 status. We've maintained our bottom rating, we've submitted a balanced budget, and for the fourth year in a row, have avoided any centrally-imposed budget reductions. All regular employee groups received compensation increases over the past 12 months, and we have reached agreement on new or modified contracts with AAUP, PIO, IATSC, and ASME. President Montgomery announced his retirement for June of 2025, and PCAT and the Board of Trustees are here to recognize and value his leadership and accomplishments through an increase to his base pay and retirement rates and benefits. So with that, the Board, PCAT, has recommended to the Board it's to receive a 2.75 increase in base pay. The current salary is $50889, and with this increase, the salary will be $522061, retroactive to July 1st. Additionally, it's recommended the Board confer upon the President Montgomery retirement rates and benefits consistent with those applicable to the university's specially-appointed administrative staff as of the date of his retirement, June 30th, 2025. These changes are going to be incorporated by a written agreement between both and the president. So with that, that is the recommended action. I need a motion, or I'll ask if there's any questions. Question? No? Motion? I'll move the approval.
Support.
Okay.
Chair Edgerton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey's proxy vote is yes. Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Chair Edgerton, motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all. With that, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items, anybody needs any discussion, clarification? Jan is available for any questions? No? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Chair Edgerton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey's proxy vote is yes. Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Chair Edgerton, consent items pass.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes the formal agenda. Now we'll go into general public comments. I believe we have some?
We do. We have nine people set up. Again, just ask that we stay to the three-minute timeframe, please. First to speak is Joanne. Joanne Bonin?
Okay.
All right, sounds good. Olivia.
Hello. Okay, no, who's on? I was not expecting you first, so, okay. Last time I spoke to you all in September, I talked about the atrocities Israel is committing in Gaza and the West Bank. I also talked about the power of universities to take a stand against these atrocities and to stand for justice. Needless to say, I have been extremely disappointed by the inaction of the board on this issue. WMU's chapter of Students for Justice in Palestine has been asking you all to adopt ceasefire resolution since this past May. Members have sent countless emails to you all and to the president's cabinet with updates about Gaza, and most have not received a single response from any of you. The recent re-
Last time I spoke to you all in September, I talked about the atrocities Israel is committing in Gaza and the West Bank. I also talked about the power of universities to take a stand against these atrocities and to stand for justice. Needless to say, I have been extremely disappointed by the inaction of the board on this issue. WMU's chapter of Students for Justice in Palestine has been asking you all to adopt ceasefire resolution since this past May. Members have sent countless emails to you all and to the president's cabinet with updates about Gaza, and most have not received a single response from any of you. The recent We Talk event was also a major failure, with not a single use of the word genocide being used in reference to the violence being subjected onto the Palestinian people. And it is a genocide. MSD International labeled it as such in their most recent report, writing that, quote, "Israel has carried out acts prohibited under the genocide convention with specific intent to destroy Palestinians in Gaza. These acts includes, include killings, causing serious bodily or mental harm, and deliberately inflicting on Palestinians in Gaza, conditions of life calculated to bring about their physical destruction." If that doesn't make you feel pretty sick to your stomach, then I'm not sure what else there is to say to you. Your inaction on this issue sends a message to us that you all could not care less about what we have been trying to tell you for over seven months. We've had a few meetings with a few members of the cabinet, and while we do appreciate it, it is not enough to just sit in a room and talk about this. We need immediate action from the entire board on this issue. People are being murdered by the Israeli occupation forces as we speak, with weapons paid for with our tax dollars. This board has the power to make a meaningful statement and contribution to this movement, and that would set a precedent for other universities to do the same. The lack of inaction of other universities cannot continue to be an excuse to be complicit in this. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "A time comes when silence is betrayal." He was talking about the Vietnam War in this speech, but the same sentiment rings true with U.S. involvement in the Palestinian genocide. I urge this board to end its betrayal of Palestinian students, staff, and alumni, and adopt the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.[685.19][685.19][applause]
Thank you, Olivia. Don. Don Cunha.
First of all, I want to congratulate Olivia for that great statement. It was brave. Good afternoon. As Olivia mentioned, last week, MSD International issued a two-hundred-page document demonstrating how the war in Gaza is genocide. And I just want to read a short piece of that. I won't even read it, I'll just tell you. You know that forty-four thousand people have been killed in Gaza so far. Sixty-two percent of them are women, children, and old people. None of you are happy with that. But it's worse, because it is our weapons that are killing these people. We are complicit, and we are here today to ask you to take a stand against that. Now what we are asking you to do is to divest. We think that's the best way, to break all economic ties with weapons producers that are producing these weapons. But if you don't, I know you don't want to do that, but that doesn't mean you can't do anything. You can call for a ceasefire. You can demand that our nation stop sending these weapons to Israel. You may think that's an empty gesture, but I disagree. If you take that stand, the people of Gaza will know that they are not alone. If you take that stand, you will set a model for other universities and inspire them to take similar stands. If you take that stand, then you will say, do the most important thing, I think. This is an institute of education. You will teach our students the most important lesson that they need to learn, that every person has dignity, and that when one person is oppressed, it is not acceptable that we stand by. It is important that we take a stand. So we're here today to say that we want to be proud of this university. We want to be the university that says, "No more, not in our name, never again for anyone." Please, do what is right. Take a stand for justice. At least, issue a statement that this university stands against the killing, stands against the slaughter, and we demand that it end.[880.00][880.00][applause]
Thank you, Don. Next, Charlie? Charlie? Charlie's not here? Okay. Jacinda.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacinda Swanson. I'm a recently retired professor, associate professor from the Department of Political Science. I'm here for the third time to ask that the Western administration and the Board of Trustees issue a strongly worded and specific ceasefire resolution and quickly divest. Back in the spring, I watched the film Zone of Interest, but without my Jewish partner, who refuses to watch films about the Holocaust. The film portrays the daily domestic lives of German officers and families living outside the Auschwitz concentration camp, gardening, raising their kids, hosting family and friends, throwing parties. They go about their daily routines without showing any misgivings or concerns about the genocide that they are either actively carrying out or fully aware of on the other side of
Tubal Player in the one-hundred-and-twenty-six Army Band. I'm here today to address the administration's decision to move Professor David Mercedes, Professor of Tubal and Euphonium, to part-time status for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six academic year. WMU is a D1 school, yet this administration consistently treats its school of music with a level of respect that would not be seen at institutions of similar calibers. MSU has had its Professor of Tubal and Euphonium, Dr. Cinder, for forty-three years. WMU is now on its third Tubal professor in four years. This turnover rate is unacceptable and detrimental to the education of the Tubal students who are here with you today, and other students in the wider school of music. Studio heads cannot be part-time jobs. I understand the university's desire to fill positions with adjunct and part-time professors. It does save money. But studio heads are responsible for far more than just teaching a dozen students, instrumental students. They play in faculty ensembles, teach classes, coach small student ensembles, and network, recruiting student musicians to attend this very student body. Filling these positions in this way creates a poor environment for the teacher and the students alike. An adjunct professor should not be expected to do full-time work, and being a studio head, simply put, is a full-time job. Music students need assistance after regular school hours. Because of this, a studio professor's day will look different than any other faculty on campus. Professor Mercedes has spent countless days at Dalton Center from seven AM until twelve AM in his short time here. He has helped me decide on a Tubal purchase, coached small ensembles as late as eleven PM, and brought the studio to an international Tubal conference. His willingness to go out of his way to help students build their skills and get them new experience is a testament to his teaching ability. It is an undershame that this school has decided to move him to part-time. Professor Mercedes is an extremely talented musician, teacher, and an excellent person. If his position is not restored to full-time, this school will lose yet another amazingly talented faculty member. No excuse for lack of funding, or as the students see it, a lack of care or grit to do the right thing, should stop this board from rectifying this grievous error. If it does not, I predict Professor Mercedes, like the professor before him, will find a new position elsewhere, one that properly recognizes his talent and worth, and his students, whether currently enrolled, private, or prospective, may decide to follow him. The sentiment goes the exact same for the bassoon professor, who is in the same position. The Tubal players of the studio could not be enforced today because they are currently out playing Alabama's game. If you want them to continue doing that, you better have a full-time professor.[1571.44][1571.44][applause]
Hi there. Appreciate you letting me speak. I just wanted to address a few things that I've seen in previous meetings. I just want to ask you a question. Do you all feel like that we should respect you all and listen to you? I know you can't verbally speak to me, but nonverbals are still pretty good. If you feel that way, do you also feel like the people standing up here should be listened to and respected? Oof, tough crowd. Well, I just want to acknowledge, do these things feel respectful to you? Yes? No? No? Okay. Well, I do want to just say that I do empathize with your position. I mean, I'm a tech kid. I have my phone on me all the time, and I have ADHD, so a little bit of distraction to stay focused, it helps. But I just want you all to remember what it looks like and it feels like to the people who are standing up here that you feel should be respected and listened to when these things go on. Now, today, I've seen great from you guys. I think that's really great, but in previous times, I've seen it to be a little worse. I just want to acknowledge, I just want that to be acknowledged with each other and everybody in the room, so, thanks.[1650.11][1650.11][applause]
Ms. Warren, that concludes the public commentary for the session. Chair.
Thank you all. First of all, I just, I want to thank everyone for the remarks today. First of all, coming out and giving your first发言.